It's just like town. The others down the chain, which is why he does the same thing. He's just like him. He's pulling the stick against the wall.
He's calling beer. It's just a... It's called order. The Dune City Council regular meeting Wednesday, November 8, 2017, at 6:00. You have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bob Corset.
Here.
Councillor Tom Allen.
Here.
Councillor Robert Orr.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
And let the record show that Councillor Duke Wells and Councillor Alan Montgomery are both absent and excused.
I have a Joe Stanford pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now accept a motion to approve the agenda. So move.
Certainly.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Consent agenda. Accept a motion for the approval of consent agenda. So move.
Certainly.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Hearing none. Announcements. We're still looking for Citizens Advisory Committee volunteers, so if you would like to be involved, please call and make an appointment, and Jamie will help you out with that.
Or convene a meeting.
Citizen input for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody?
We do.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, let's start with Gray Hicks.
Beating the same horse.
Okay, Gray.
I'm Gray Hicks. I'm a resident of Dune City. I have had opportunity to get a copy of the LUC application from the state. I noticed in the application that there were significant errors in the application itself. The application, the land use compatibility statement says it needs to comply with city code, and all the provisions of the code are construed to conform with the adopted comprehensive The acceptance of these LUC applications falls under the official actions of the city. If it is a type 1 application, my understanding is that the planning secretary or somebody else he or she officially designates can sign these applications if they are straightforward and the procedure that is used is clear and objective approval criteria. If it is not clear and objective approval criteria, a type 2 procedure, administrative procedure, is supposed to be used. Those type 2 decisions are made by the planning commission with public notice. There was no public notice. There was no notice at all given on any of these applications, on this specific application which deals with Green Gate. And as such, there's a section in the code that says if these are filled in incorrectly, the city council can void them. That is under section, sorry, I lost my note, 155.4.1, I believe. So the city council can look at these. This one was issued with conditions. If they are issued with conditions, they're supposed to go through a type 2 approval process. The planning commission or the city council is supposed to look at them. Neither of which happened. So I would like the city council to take action, recall that, that specific LUC application, address the concerns that were not met the first time, and put it out for public review. When I say public review, and notice to the adjoining property owners for the conditions that were set upon the LUC application.
Thank you, Gray. Thanks. Catherine Cottle?
I'm Catherine Cottle, and I'm Dune City resident. And I sent an email to Linda and asked her to send, under confidentiality, an envelope to each of you. Did you see it in your packet? No? Okay. Well, I brought copies, just in case that would occur. So the reason why I sent it under confidentiality is because it concerns matters that maybe you're not aware of. One of the matters is, on March 30, 2017, all of you met at a wonderful session, a work session, and you met with the planning commission. And after that work session, the administration mentioned that we had received two luxes that day. One was for Dennis Smith, and the other was for Patricia Smalley, who also goes by Patricia Kane. And those were filled out later on, they were filled out in April, by the administration. Then in May, the city received another lux, and that was for Mr. McGuire. And Mr. McGuire's then was completed in that month and sent on up to OLCC. What you may not know is that on February 2, 2017, Valerie Kane Mathis also submitted a lux, and that lux was completed by Renee Green and submitted to OLCC. Now, under a request for public records with OLCC, they sent me copies. That's the first I heard of Valerie Kane's application. She has presented testimony multiple times, but we've never seen her lux. We were never given a copy. That again was February 2. Okay? So some of you were not even sitting, the county council in that month, so you may not have known about it. Now, what's important about that lux is that it talks about the well. And it also says that Valerie Kane Mathis's lot on Dune Bray, the second lot in, will have three 30 by 60 grain houses full of pot, three of them, not a house, three. And it will use the well to water them. So you know that whole time I was arguing about the well was concerned? Rightfully so. We should be concerned. The water master's concerned, OLCC's concerned, because they didn't know it was domestic well. They do now, but they didn't. So this is the one that you may not have ever seen. And it's very important that you also know that Dennis Smith, who owns Green Gates Grow, also incorporated the grows up on Dune Bray. He's one in the same. His farms up there will be called, in his, their farms, Incorporated Farms, will be called Terrace Farms, 1 and 2. Now, there are five other lots currently available for sale. What are the chances that it's going to be 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7? Eighty thousand square feet of pot being grown on two lots. The little barn, as I guess one of our members said, it was just a little barn, it's going to be one of two, 40 by 60s. That's on the first lot. And I remind you, the second lot, Valerie's Grow, 3 30 by 60s. I don't think that we bought a residential zone to have us be surrounded by this. I don't think that that was what we signed up for. So here are the proofs. I'd like you to take into the records.
Give that to Jamie, please. Thank you.
And I know you feel defeated. I understand. I've felt like you. I've been in your shoes. I've read rules. I get upset sometimes about rules that don't fit for the circumstance. At the same time, I also read our city code and try to figure out a way to work through this. There is a city code that allows you to take the action necessary. You didn't know about the February, I believe you didn't know about the February, did you? Did you know that happened? Probably not. So the code is 155127. It's official action. 155127. The official action says that if these luxes were not completed by the proper individual, that you can void them, all of them. You can take that action. It's in our city code.
Thank you. Mayor Joe, I can't read the last name.
Leach.
Leach. Thank you.
I sent an email today to a number of people, including the city administrator, and I'd like to read it. I don't think it'll take too long. This is regarding the Smiths' OLCC application to obtain a recreational marijuana growers' permit on tax lot 191214100200. I previously requested all Dune City documents regarding this property in response to this application. During examination of the property documents, it was determined that a number of concerns must be addressed involving the state of Oregon and Dune City. These concerns are iterated below so that parties can be made aware of the scope of my complaint. The Smiths have been operating a medical marijuana grow for a number of years on a parcel containing three residences. The primary residence, a second unpermitted residence, and a third placed there on a variance and conditional use permit issued on September 10, 1987, is a caretaker's cottage. It appears that the Smiths now use two of these residences as rental properties. Additionally, unpermitted auxiliary buildings have appeared on current map submitted for which there is no authority. The people who were given this conditional use permit are both deceased. The variance doesn't apply. The conditional use authorization appears to have expired as I obtained a copy of the letter from Dune City dated June 12, 1997, to Gladys Miller regarding revocation of variance and conditional use permit and questioning the existence of a third unknown residence. She may have transferred the property or done something, I don't know. But this letter was in response to an ad for sale of this property by Central Pacific that said there were three houses and additional sleeping quarters, all of which were not supposed to be there. Water permit number 41109, certificate 84479, authorizes, and I'm quoting here, domestic use for one family, not to exceed .005 CFS. There is no irrigation rights on that permit. It is a permit for a single house, okay? The waters of Bowling Lake have been and continue to be used to service three homes instead of one is authorized. Additionally, the waters are being used to irrigate what appears to be a commercial medical marijuana grow. Irrigation runoff containing chemicals is entering the Bowling Lake water channel. The mandated water deliveries to this commercial site from an outside source have not occurred, okay? They have not brought any water in, and it's been verified, so they're using the water from the lake. The Smiths own a retail marijuana store located in Florence at the Dunes Village Shopping Center, and the licensing authority for that, I don't know anything about. I've attached a link in this email. The email was sent to the city today, so it's available, showing the extent of the outdoor grow. It appears to be larger than the maximum 96 plants to which Mr. Smith may be legally limited. It's funny how those work. They give you... Also visible is a blater structure probably used to store water and numerous bags of chemicals all over the ground. It's an aerial photo of the property, and you can see that. The Oregon Health Authority should review the situation as the health and well-being of the watershed upon which city residents, ODFW, and honeymoon state park users are dependent. This should be a top concern. The disregard of licensee requirements exhibited by the Smiths is appalling. They are inappropriate candidates for an OLCC recreational grow permit and have violated their medical grow permit. I also attached to this the letter from Dune City in 1997 talking about the sale of this house, what was advertised, and also the waterway. I think that's all I can cover. In looking at the OMMP regulations, someone who has been given a medical marijuana license and violates these water, which is very unequivocal, there are very easy rules to read about where you get this water, it's a Class B felony, and they revoke your license. And I'm hoping that OMPP will do something about what has been going on here. This is a number of years. I have no idea how long. This conditional use permit doesn't apply anymore. The maps that have been submitted over the years show buildings that are there, and then they're gone. These people were burning down things and then trying to replace them and do things. In this current map he's showing for his lux application, there's buildings there that shouldn't be there. They're not there, they weren't there, where'd they come from? So that's kind of the scope of my complaint, is that there's a lot of people involved to look in this and get the answers about what is going on here. So I'll submit this for the brick mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Joe. Del Resinhuber. He has chairs with wheels on it.
Yeah, I'm Del Resinhuber, Dune City resident. I am presenting tonight a notice of inappropriate action. At the October 25 special council session, the council unanimously voted to approve improperly submitted lux, got to get my glasses so I can read the message of this, to support commercial growing of marijuana in residential neighborhoods. It is clearly understood that the council took this action as a result of communication from the growers attorney, Ross Day, in which he threatened legal action against the city staff, council members personally, and the city in general if the council acted to withdraw the lux. I wish to point out this action by the council is contrary to Oregon law, specifically ORS 244.040, which follows. A public official may not use or attempt to use an official position or office to obtain financial gain or avoidance of financial detriment for the public official. I strongly urge the council to once again recall the improperly approved lux and take such action as to support the Dune City Comprehensive Plan and not allow the commercial growing of marijuana in our residential neighborhoods. If the council finds they are unwilling to act in accordance with Oregon law, I ask that all members of the council and the city staff resign immediately, since they have demonstrated they are incapable of acting in the best interest of the city, as they are acting to protect themselves from potential financial detriment. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's enough.
All right, move on to old business. Appointment of individual to finish the remaining term for my decision.
Well, as suggested a meeting or two ago, we had a subtle group of the full council. Tom was on it, Del was on it, and I was on it. And we met and interviewed all six applicants. Every one of them is qualified. And our recommendation, I think, is twofold. I think Tom had one recommendation, and Del and I agreed on another recommendation. Susan Snow is who Duke and I recommended, and Tom recommended Terry Duman. So that's where we are.
Conversation.
Well, one concern is that Duke's not here, which is a concern, and we're missing another councillor who's not here, so I don't know what my recommendation is, other than I sure want to move forward with, you know, getting a new council member on board as soon as we can. But it just feels to me like this is such an important decision, and I'd sure like to have, as full council, be involved in that, as could be involved in that, but I don't know if that should deter us making a decision tonight or not.
Could you repeat the candidates were, just give me the names again, please. The two of you and Tom recommend, Duke recommend.
Duke and I recommended, I'm sorry, I have a friend who's dying, and I'm trying to kind of keep a little bit of contact with that. Susan Snow is the one that Duke and I recommended. Did you want to know all the candidates, or?
No, just the two, and Tom, Terry Duman. Terry Duman. Okay. And is it appropriate to ask if there were specifics that caused you to recommend these individuals?
As I said, I think they were all qualified. I thought Susan had some incredibly different background that I thought might really help the council. And I don't know how to say this any other way than, I think, you know, I have a wife, and she thinks different than I do. And I don't know if that's because of education, or sex, or the fact that she thinks I'm an idiot sometimes. But a piece of the discussion was that this is beginning to feel like an old boys' club. And I think fresh insight from any of these people would be wonderful, but we don't have a woman councillor at this time.
That's sexist.
I know that. I think I apologize to begin with. That certainly isn't the only reason, and not the strongest reason, but it's an observation.
Yes?
I found Susan Snow to be very qualified, very impressive. The reason I chose Terry Duman is Terry has been here 40-plus years. I think he's local. Susan is not. And we have so many complicated, serious issues right now going on, namely this marijuana thing, in Dune City, that I felt Terry would be more qualified than Susan, because he knows so many people, knows the situation here, he knows the culture, and that's why I went with Terry. I think he can help us sort this out. We don't want marijuana. We keep saying that, we're only doing what our attorneys tell us we have to do. That's it. So...
Well, what Councillor Meyer said about not having a full complement of councillors tonight does concern me as well. At this point, I would suggest that it would be appropriate to postpone the decision until we have everybody here. I'm also sympathetic to the need to move forward and get somebody new on board, but I think to have one of the members of the reviewing group not here is significant, and to have one-third of the present council missing is also significant. So that would be my feeling on it at this point.
You agree with Tom?
Either way, it is fine.
Not knowing really how Allen weighs in on that, and Duke needs to speak his own thing, I think we really need to put it off until next month, or next meeting, which I really hate to do, but I think that everybody's correct. I mean, we really need to get everybody's input. It's kind of important. All right? All right. So with that, we'll move to next meeting. Do we have a work session in November that we can have? No, we've had holidays, don't we?
Yes, but it is on the agenda to schedule one if you're going to have one.
Well, what I was thinking is if we have a work agenda and we have a forum, we can also go ahead and discuss this topic as well.
Which, oh, the appointment?
Yes.
Oh, you could have a special session.
Yeah. So that's a possibility.
And that's a possibility? As a matter of fact, given the next item on the agenda, that may be what you choose to do.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, let's talk about the date that we can do that. I don't really hate to wait until we go too much further. All right, we'll do that. Any other old business anybody can think of? All right, new business, December council meeting.
I am not available for that meeting, and I have every faith that staff can handle it, but I just wanted to let you know that I am not available.
Is there any reason not to have one? I mean, our regular meeting in December? What date would that be? 13? 13? I'm good with the 13th. I don't see a reason not to do it. And then we could have a special meeting for the topic that's signed between now and then.
If that's what you choose to do.
Yes, I would like to, but yeah. Yeah, I really don't want to put it off anymore. We have to. Excellent. If you'll find it's a date, we appreciate it. Request for engineering drainage, we have to put that off because it affects one of our council members, and that would throw it out of the forum. So I have some ideas on that, too, Jamie, that I'll talk to you about. Your equipment, please.
The equipment lease for our coffee machine has, will be expiring soon. This is in the packet, you'll see, the proposed new coffee machine lease. The one thing that I can point out for sure is that it's less expensive than the last one.
May I ask for a certification, Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Jamie, what I understand on this lease is that the cost is $185 a month. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
And the network services, $199. Is that also a monthly, or is that a one-time fee?
The $199 is billed separately usually once a year.
Okay.
And I believe that's $199 a month.
It is? Okay. And how does, can you roughly tell us how this compares to the, we have a current lease that's expiring and we've been paying on that?
We have a current lease that was more than, not much more than $185. Some change. Well, no, they say kept at the same, $185, $25.
This is a new machine?
This is a new.
Upgraded to what you have? So there's no budget change essentially?
No. And hopefully we will be at the point where we can get this document signed that we need to get signed and to the county so we don't have to pay taxes on it. It's like we've been paying taxes on it all these years.
Okay. That would be a good thing. Any other questions, Jamie? Yes, Tom?
Jamie, are there any penalties for bailing out of the old one? Is there?
No, this is with the same company.
Remember, they all expire.
And what is the purchase option on the new machine?
I have no idea. I didn't, I didn't negotiate this. This was done with city staff.
Okay. So if we're looking at a basic, where there's a rental of $185 a month and $199 a year, we word the thing out and?
Pretty much.
Start over.
We're particularly having a lot of trouble right now because it has decided to limit how much we can email to each other from the machine. And that is a real problem sometimes.
Jamie, is there an additional perk? I was trying, I thought I saw something here. There's an additional per copy charge, or does this cover?
Only if we go over a certain amount.
Okay.
And to my knowledge, we've never done that.
Okay. Anything else? So you just need an action to go ahead and sign the agreement? Thank you.
You need a motion?
Yes, please.
Oh, do you? Got a motion to allow Jamie to sign this new lease agreement?
So moved.
Any discussion? None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? It passes. Water management and conservation plan, state permit?
Dune City currently has four permits with the state of Oregon for the use of surface water, right? One of the permits is permit number S, I don't know, I'm gonna get the number wrong.
Is it the 44501?
S44501, yes. S44501, which is actually a municipal domestic, a water right for a municipal right, meaning that we would have an entire system. We would have all the pipes in the street, and we'd have the water treatment plant, and we would have all these things. And when it was, when application was made for this permit, it was contemplated that a water utility district would be created, and that's the direction the city would move in. That was placed before the voters because it would be a taxing authority and our charter requires that. And the voters turned it down. And then I believe the voters turned it down a couple more times later when they kept coming back, probably every time they had to seek an extension of the municipal permit. Historically, we have been reluctant to give up on that municipal permit and just, you know, walk away from it because someday the city might need a system like that. In the last extension that was granted to us, we're granted until 2048 to actually create the system, what they did not extend was the requirement to file what's called a water management and conservation plan. So we have three years within which to file that document, and that three years expired August 15th of this year. I had been in conversation with the people at both, at the state, both in the water management conservation plan division and the state water master's office. And the water master indicated to me that the governor was looking at coming up with a plan. Right now, a water management conservation plan for the city of Dune City is exactly the same as the one for Portland. So we have to meet all those standards and all those requirements. And so the governor was looking at possibly coming up with a small-size city thing because it's, I mean, the filing fee alone is $2,090. And that's just to file a report. It requires a lot of engineering. Well, I'm going to suggest, rather than get into it much more tonight, but I'm going to suggest that when you have a work session, that this be one of the items that be discussed. Do you want to move forward with the municipal permit? Is it something in which case we're going to need to find money to pay for somebody to do this? I'm going to submit what I've prepared. But I'm sure it's going to come back, sorry, unacceptable. I am positive of that. So we'll do it, and it'll open up the lines of communication with the state and probably can make a better decision from there.
Okay. Ready for use of water rights?
South Coast Water District has made application to the city to enter into, to share with our, our shared domestic water supply program. They're requesting enough for their eighty-six hookups. They currently serve eighty-six customers. And the document, the proposed agreement is in your packet. It would be treated like any other community water system that would make application. They would pay $100 per hookup for each hookup, so that'd be the eighty-six different hookups, which that number may change depending on where they've, right now they don't have a location for taking water out of Loing. So until that actually happens, this isn't going anywhere. But this is, as you'll recall, last year, we had this disaster. The system went down. Most of the South Coast Water District customers were without water for ten days. The governor's office came in with their regional solutions team, met with everybody and discussed it. And this was the option that the governor recommended be taken, is to allow South Coast to apply for shared domestic water under our water supply. It is, it went through all the processes of the state to make sure that it was allowable under our permit. And this would be the oldest permit. And so that's where we are right now. They are requesting, if they ever get a hookup, a place to put the straw in. They'd be allowed to use the water right.
I would think that it would be more appropriate to negotiate it at the time than come up with a straw, as you put it, as a source.
That's fine.
Rather than arbitrarily do it today. Because?
Well, there's certainly time.
Yeah, there's time on our hands. Don't want to forget, and this is, this is their offer, but that probably is just their first offer. So I'd like to wait and see what comes up and actually have a business plan that allows them to pull water from it. My opinion on that.
Well, what's in that agreement is our code.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, all right. No action at this time? Memorandum of Agreement related to W building inspection, right?
On the dials, you'll see a letter there from Assistant Legal Counsel for the Land Council of Government. Originally, this would have been considered a housekeeping chore. You know, we enter into an agreement with Northwest Code professionals to provide the building inspection services for the city. We've done it for years. Recently, the Department of Justice, very recently, like, you know, day before yesterday, the Department of Justice has decided that any time a municipality contracts out the work that it does for, as a responsibility for the city, it is unconstitutional. And so they are, right now, there are hundreds of cities wondering what's going to happen next. And so our legal counsel advised not to sign this tonight, not to vote on it until we wait and see. They had their first negotiating session today. From what I'm being told, not much came out of it. Can't seem to get a specific answer from Department of Justice what it is they're concerned about. But this will affect, well, I think it's funny. It said in the letter, as you'll see, that, you know, it would turn over to Lane County for operation. Lane County, of course, would not enforce our code at that point. So none of our building codes would then come into play and could not be enforced. However, Lane County contracts out its duties for building inspection as well. So, so I don't know where it's going to all end up. But it's all due to the state by January 1st. So we're going to get an answer pretty quickly, or we're going to have to do it somehow.
Or they'll, or they'll kick it down the road like they do a lot of things. So it'll be interesting to see what they do.
See what they find, see what they do, so.
Interesting.
Doesn't, excuse me, doesn't Lane County also use the same individual?
Yes. The concern is this.
You know what's really behind it?
Lane Council of Government's concern is that, stop and think about it, we contract out with Cardinal for the rest of the staff.
Sure.
That would, could no longer happen. There's a number of things. I mean, we contract, we contract with our engineers.
I don't know any municipality that doesn't outsource something.
Yes.
Use of the letter, I guess. November work session. Got your calendar?
About the 23rd, I wouldn't have to bake a turkey.
I'll burn stuffing.
How you guys got over there? What are you looking at? Do you have, want to go out at eight or two? Somewhere, somewhere between the 20th and the 1st.
Well, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that, 20th, 21st, Wednesday, I'm pretty good, although Wednesday's kind of pusher than I think.
I wouldn't do Wednesday.
No, I wouldn't. I'm just looking for blocks.
Monday or Tuesday.
21st, Tuesday.
Tom?
That is, that's my day with Florence.
Is it?
Did they want you there?
I don't know, I remain not sure. What, what time were you thinking of that?
What's your schedule?
I think we're pretty places.
If we could do it as late as?
Three? Later than 100 for me.
Okay, four?
Except for staff, I mean, but yes, again.
Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 21st, at, what's good time?
After, after, I usually have appointments up to three, so 3:30.
3:30.
Let's go 3:30.
And this is a work session or a special session?
We can, we can do a?
Oh, he's talking November.
November, yeah. So one, one thing that we want to do is, well, we could make it a special session. Let's do a special session, that way we can do several different things. And we can, we can get the position filled primarily.
And would we say 3:30 or?
3:30.
On the 21st?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Excellent. All right, in the public hearing, another executive session reports. I have met with, I did have a really good meeting with Chief Turner. Gave me some ideas of, some background. Mainly what I was, what I wanted to meet with Chief Turner was in regards to law enforcement issues. And as he was, was the deputy sheriff in Lane County, I thought he could fill in a lot of blanks, which he did. And gave some good ideas, and we'll be looking at some of those. I've yet to be able to score a meeting with our local judge. And I've got a note in to buyer that, I forget buyer, because I sent the sheriff in Lane County trip to meet with him and then the state police so that I can pull all this together and try to figure out, you know, where, you know, where we stand, what we're doing.
Were you thinking IGA or?
I'm thinking something to that.
Like that?
Something like that, because, you know, the expenses that we had that took so long for response kind of, kind of billowed to me and it's a light and fast situation. When we have two, if not three, sheriffs that actually live in town, one, if not more, state police that actually live in town, and a sheriff that's assigned to the Dunes that is paid by the BLM, that somebody can't be cut loose to take care of an active shooting situation. So we've got to really narrow that down or find out, at least find out why, you know, so that we can get that going. I had a fairly couple-hour meeting with Jay, the voting Lane County Commissioner for our area, and spoke with him, told him some of our concerns. And he is, has commented that he's available to help me and give us any counsel that he can. And, you know, he's going to start spending more time here probably once every couple weeks, so if we need to pull him in or he's volunteered to come to meetings and speak. So we'll pull some of these people in to see if we can, if we can actually understand what we're doing and where we're headed and get some really good information from them and what's available to us. So it was some, a couple pretty good meetings. Community center is, Duke is gone.
But the trenches, bud.
The trenches.
We might get Perp and Jank's mood once and for all, soon.
They float today, I think. Public work maintenance supervisor at court?
No, water quality.
Oh, water quality.
Water quality is still good, really good. No, mostly not that many. The SICU reports are, are done on the 24th of this month and they're as good or better than I've seen in the last five months. Concern about Silcoos in terms of lowness of water right now. But as I understand it, we're talking with or trying to get ahold of the dam people. Unintended to.
The people who are currently operating the dam are operating it in accordance with the order, very strictly.
I understand that.
And that is what we're not accustomed to.
Well, we're having people on Silcoos that are almost ready to have to hike out to their dock.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
That's your report?
Probably more than the US.
Well, do you have anything to share on public work?
Water's still running downhill.
Well, that's one good. I'd be concerned if it wasn't.
If you haven't driven by occasionally armed road. If you haven't driven by Keesley Arm Road to see the work that's been done over there, seems to be working. We haven't had the torrential rains yet, but it seems to be working for so far. And the paving has been completed on Parkway Drive.
Emergency services?
The report is in here. It's really very short, attended the WeLog meeting, although you read that on your own because my report's relatively. Moving on, if there's no questions about the emergency services, which you guys had a chance to review. No usual building permits and that sort of thing. CAC and Planning Commission are continuing their work on Title, Chapter 155, and staff was instructed to draft language regarding regulation of commercial marijuana activities in the Dune City limits. So we, the staff, Rapunzel and I are currently working on that. The next meetings will be November 30th at 5:00 PM and 5:40 PM, 5:45 PM respectively. US Navy Sea Cadet Corps, Couste Bay Division, led by Marcus Luttrell, finished the walkway down to the river at the overlook. It's really kind of nice. So if you get a chance, go out there and check it out. Part of their community project. Also, the trench has been completed for the installation of the gas lines so the propane tanks can be moved. And although the rock wall fell, and we have now managed to get all the rocks out, we hope to have it done next week. At least that's many if we can by next week. And the repairs and improvements on the sign at the boat dock are underway. October complaints had to do primarily with grading excavation projects that didn't require Dune City permits but required Lane County permits or Department of Forests permits. We do have a complaint about a neighboring property owner digging a ditch to allow his stormwater runoff to go onto his neighbor's property. Clever, but no. We have received numerous public information requests regarding, which we have fulfilled with regard to the OLCC. However, the OLCC contacted us and told us that House Bill 1401A was signed into law and exempt certain information regarding marijuana facilities from public information requests. I have contacted an appraiser to do the work on regarding the Silcoos Lake Club Roadways. I spoke to Dan Carpenter of the Siasla Water Shad Council, who was working on the Siasla River and Coast Lake strategic plans for Cocoa Salmon recovery, and he indicated that they would be finishing up the Siasla River portion strategic plan and wants to meet with representatives of Dune City when they get started on the Silcoos Lake portion of the plan. I missed a little last month when I said that it was the governor's resolution team that had, I had talked to regarding complaints. It was actually, I was contacted by ODOT, ODOT's resolution team regarding concerns expressed by a Dune City resident that they would be, to come down for an investigation regarding installation of a barrier along Highway 101. I did speak at length with Jay Pavella of ODOT and he explained that they prefer a green solution, meaning they would rather not have a hard barrier, but the planting of stable, good-sized shrubs, not trees, could be something that works. And so he has, I contacted him again in regard to that and he's given, he's forwarded that information request to another guy that I was supposed to talk to about that. Meter reader has, has been trained and is almost 90% finished with reading on the meters, the numbers with regard to an increase in motel taxes because of the eclipse that come in and where we normally get as much as 1,200 to 1,500 a month for June and July. This year, we received over 3,800 for the month of August and over 3,400 for the month of September. So it's kind of nice to have a boost to the budget on that. In order to apply for seismic rehabilitation grant funding, the city's required to have an ASCE 41-13 evaluation for a tier-two facility, and believe it or not, I know what that means. Except that the ground motion level has to be increased to 75% rather than 20%, which is the norm. I have contacted an engineering firm that is capable to do that evaluation and expect to receive a quote in the near future. Wanted to let you know a couple of things and they're not actually in the written report and I apologize for that. With regard to the Kane Mathis application, an investigation was done. The application was not in Dune City files at all. There is a continued investigation, so we're wondering how the application got to where it did. We, I, on the instructions of the city attorney, I contacted OLCC and told them that it was entered in error, that it is incorrect, and, and to please amend the looks to that effect. I was contacted by them today and right now, as far as they are concerned, as far as I can tell, I haven't confirmed it yet, but from the response I got today, they're considering that application as not valid. So they're down to two. Also, with regard to the Smith application, the matter has been referred to the state. Thank you very much, Mayor Joe. And with regard to the buildings that are there that are erected without permits, an investigation is currently being done that would require them to do what needs to be done to bring them into compliance with Dune City code. Thank you. And I think that's all I have. Oh, one more. For some of you who know, there was a criminal activity outside of Dune City Hall on October 18th and the investigation is now complete and the individual has been charged and cited for criminal mischief.
Is there a person of Dune City resident?
I didn't recognize him, so I don't know, but the police officer did.
There, he was known to the police?
Yes, and it was a he. Yes, and it was a he.
Good of you.
Just a quick question, if I may, for Jamie. This ODOT along 101, is that something that, that if, if a plan is, is developed for landscape fix or something, is that something that the state pays for or is that a Dune City responsible?
No, it would be something that the city would do.
Okay.
Or we can wait until they redo that portion of 101 and make a request that it be included at that time.
I see, okay.
I have been involved with Dune City since 2000, well, before 2007, and we've been asking the state to do that all this time. So I don't hold that much hope for that. I would rather see, hey, let's a bunch of volunteers get down there, figure out what species they'll accept, do it the way they want to, and let's get some holes in the ground and get it done.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman? My favorite birthday card last month was, "The reason that the men's rooms are always on the left side of women's is because the women are always right." And I got kind of women-headed with the breeze.
Do that. Is that a motion to adjourn? Sooner. Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Meeting's adjourned at 6:58. Thank you all for attending.